Do you need any kind of medical attention? Do you need any kind of law enforcement needs?
It's Officer Hurst, badge number two zero one four.
A. Hamley, badge number one five two nine.
Like what?
You think the mayor is an actor and not a mayor?
Like what? Naughty, you guys know, you guys know, man. You guys know. Dude, don't be so arrogant and so, like, cause you know, man. And you don't have a sense of humor about it either, god, man. You're gonna get thrown on the bus.
Uh, the meeting has started.
It is, yeah. You're gonna talk to me like that? What's wrong with you? Why you ask me if I'm here for a meeting?
Cause I'm asking if you're here for the meeting.
I know you're doing that, I'm asking why.
Cause I'm being courteous.
Oh, no, you're, geez, you gotta come up with something else, man. The other guy, you gotta... You're not being courteous. We haven't been so far. So what do you think? I need to go lie down somewhere or something?
Let me ask you, what am I lying about?
Don't hurt, oh. I forgot, I actually did forget. I know I said that, but I forgot what I was referring to.
So what are we lying about?
Lying to each other. Oh, lying, that line, I meant, I said her, um, about, uh...
You inferred "we", so what are we lying about?
Hold on, let me just, give me a second.
Okay. So, just a quick question. When you came upstairs, which way did you come?
Why you ask that?
Because if you came up through the front desk, you need a visitor badge. If you came up the elevator, your only business here should be go into council chambers for the city council meeting. So are you here for the council meeting, or do I have to take you back downstairs and get a visitor badge?
Yeah, you know, don't you? It shows, you know? Unless they said no. Just, uh... If they said no, it'd be okay, just, just... I'm actually disappointed. I don't like people disappointed. That's why I got into this cop stuff, you know? I mean, try to be a sense of humor. Does this guy have a sense of humor? Cause you don't, do you? She thinks it's funny. Like, but you're, there's something, you got a little bit of judgment. Your judgment's often, you know, sense of humor. You gotta defer to people.
So really quick.
You should've, like, talked to her alone or something. Cause you, you have a problem with judgment. You know, a little bit. And then it goes with not having a sense of humor, but you gotta, you gotta work on it. And then with your ego. I'm sorry I interrupted. What were you gonna say? I forgot to bring my water too. My mouth is trying out.
You still want a supervisor to come talk with you?
No, as long as you guys, you guys both in the same frame. I'm in, I'm in the belly of the beast.
So, I'm not gonna lie, I wouldn't leave Boston if I, if I was you. They have the best seafood up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You should look at my YouTube channel.
What's your YouTube?
Twenty-five years, thirty, thirty years, something more. Yeah. Yeah, went through the whole thing. And finally, um, they did all this stuff to me, and then Pat Rose got arrested. The officer, he was head of the union for a while, when I was trying to report stuff for two thousand and sixteen dating.
I started from zero.
Oh my god, that's like a real cop. They just don't have real cops in the afternoon.
Oh, I promise you, he is a real cop.
Yeah, as I was saying, you're a real cop. They don't have real cops in the afternoon.
And you know who else is from...
Yeah, they're crazy here. Like, look what I filmed them. Look at them and Officer Bush. He gets Officer Bush going. And I think they're not gonna let her back here now. I know, see, she's gonna start, you have to catch her like quick. She's gonna start smiling. Yeah, that was too quick, though. Something going on. Yes, oh, shit. She's gonna turn a little bit, just turn a little bit. Yeah, that's pretty good. Oh, who's that guy? Oh, check him out. There's the mayor. It's like, um, out in the wild. The mayor out in the wild. Oh, especially he has a special door. Oh, check him out. He's got a special door. He's got a special door. Oh my god, they go up and down. Oh, jesus, they got like some up and down. Special door. Like, this, for, they didn't have to go through the public space. I didn't even know that. I haven't been to this side since I first moved in here, probably. That's funny. Oh, that's cool. Figure all that. That's pretty cool. Probably gotta hear elevator, everything. He sure looks bitchy though, doesn't he? He looks really bitchy. See, I was turning the sound off. I'm listening to videos, I am. Yes, oh, bitchy, daddy. Jesus. Yes.
Hello?
Hey.
You wanna set up?
Um, yeah, maybe. Are they started yet?
Nope, they don't start till nine.
Oh, okay.
All right, you wanna do anything in your pockets?
Yeah. Let me just put it here. I open it early. What you guys here, two weeks ago? You guys, that was me, right?
That was me, yeah.
Did you have your body cam on?
Yes, it is.
You did, okay. Oh, yeah, what's your name and badge number?
Uh, three here, here, here.
A. Hamley?
Yep.
One five two nine, yes. Yeah, because they turned off the cameras everywhere else. That ought to be pretty good. Body cam, I mean. See, you guys are all different in the morning. Like, it's, it's not the... You guys are like regular cops. This isn't...
Nope, this isn't a costume.
You know, in the afternoon, when you come. Or you're not, you don't come in the afternoon? So you don't know what I'm talking about, yeah?
No, unfortunately.
Yeah, I put it on YouTube. You know, like, all that. God, this is like normal. Oh, there we go, there's that guy. He sure is grumpy as he. He's Tom Haden up there. He's so great. Very quiet. Okay, I get it. So like, two weeks ago, that was, there's a lot more people, right?
Yes, sir, there was.
And does, is that, is that uncommon for the morning?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, sir, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, cause, cause like, it's my theory that, well, my idea, I'm sure that it was like, um, like fake. Like, when the guy got hauled out.
No, sir, it wasn't fake.
But, but, I mean, meeting you, I don't think you'd be in on it.
No, sir, I was just doing my job at the request of city council.
Yeah, 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 but the mayor, uh, had pre-planned it with everyone.
No.
No, sir.
Oh, why do you think that?
He pre-planned with a guy to not listen, turn around, kiss?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you guys don't watch, do you watch the city council footage? We get, you know, like... Like, you don't, you don't study it, right? You guys are here in the afternoon.
Uh, no, sir, I've only had three days off this month.
I know, it's outrageous. I mean, it's a far-fetched theory.
I don't watch TV.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying this, you have to actually see it to believe it. It's one of those things, you know? Like, I'm not saying this makes sense. I'm saying, like, you see it. But if you piece it together, if it's true, and then like... Yeah, cause the mayor, there, there's a story lady told. He just randomly says they're gonna be asked to leave and... It's a choreographed stuff. You really gotta watch.
Like, you think the mayor is an actor?
Like what?
You think the mayor is an actor and not a mayor?
Like what?
That's what I'm asking you, cause I don't understand.
What does that mean, though?
I don't understand what you're asking.
Why would he, well, you just said, why do I think, do I think the mayor's an actor?
Because you said you thought that he was acting how what he would do.
Well, what about like some criminal, like, when they're not pretending not to do a certain crime? Is that like an actor? Right? You know what I mean?
I've gotten no clue what you mean.
Well, what does it mean when you say, do I think he's an actor?
Say that again?
What, what did you mean by that?
I don't know what you mean. I'm asking what you mean by criminals and actors.
Well, I started to try to, kind of delve into what you might have made. What did you mean by that?
I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, why do you, why do you say, do I, do I think the mayor's an actor?
Because that's what you were saying.
What did I say? I said he was, um, you're not gonna talk to me now, right? What is your name and badge number?
It's Officer Hurst, badge number two zero one four.
Okay.
Do you mind if you, I don't care if you record. Do you mind standing over there, so you're not like right up against us?
I think so, it's like, no.
Just a little bit of personal space.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know. I don't, I think you were, um, the way you said that was like... Like, um, what, what do you call it? Discredit measures or something?
I'm sorry?
The, the way you said that, that was to discredit me?
No, no, it's just, it's just a little bit of personal space.
So the guy was really flailing around, really violently, right?
Who?
It's really breaking, you know? So, um... So, so he, he liked, you saw, well, I, I looked at some of the news footage. So it looked like he, he was like, he really flailed. He flung his arms. He did a lot of stuff, right? So let's see the other that. So you like...
Yes, there was a report done. So if you want...
Was there media release?
Uh, I don't know if there was. Well, there must have been a media release because it actually was released to Wink News, Fox News.
If you have any questions specific about that incident, there's a case report.
You can go to the Cape World Police Department. I don't have the case number on hand, but, um, the date.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could go to the Cape World Police Department, which is right directly across the street. You could inquire about it. This location here, I believe, is ten fifteen Cultural Park. You have my name and badge number? A. Hamley, badge number one five two nine. You can request a report that was done here, uh, whatever date it was. And see the report that was, uh, done for that day.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions regarding that incident?
I cannot.
You can go to Mercedes Phillips, that is our public relations officer.
Oh, yeah?
Okay.
Sorry, I misspoke. I'm actually Corporal Hamley now. Yes. Oh, your first class, huh? Yes. Good morning.
How are you all doing?
Good morning.
How are you? Continue to be up?
Four hundred seven. Never.
Hey, you don't like what you see, you wanna come?
You know about the RICO statute, right?
Pardon?
You've already violated, um, you know, extortion law. If you do, if you do two of those within a ten-year period, you get nailed for whatever these guys do.
These guys are great.
No, not these guys. You guys should work for...
Thank you for your support.
You guys are terrific. You really are.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I just really feel bad you have to work for.
Naughty, you guys know, you guys know, man. You guys know. Dude, don't be so arrogant and so, like, cause you know, man. And you don't have a sense of humor about it either, god, man. You're gonna get thrown on the bus. Hang over here right under the bus, man. They got, the feds are watching this. For three years. I guarantee, what's his name, he's talking to him. He works for him. That's why he can be so crazy like that. Like, his training. Even though he's crazy, too. That's her, man.
Hey, good morning, sir.
How's it going?
Good, I'm good.
This business is about to lose its office, right? Thanks, guys.
Yeah, they did, actually. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I'm always tired of them. They're, they're all there. Um, they, uh, also said to kind of let them know if their other gentleman shows up. Yes.
Yeah, you know too, don't you?
Sir?
This guy knows. You know. You know. You're gonna tell me that? You're gonna tell me like I'm crazy?
Uh, the meeting has started.
It is, yeah. You're gonna talk to me like that? What's wrong with you? Now you don't wanna engage. You know, you gotta tell me, do I think the mayor's an actor? Now it's like nothing, right? It's gotta be like nothing, right?
Are you here for the meeting?
You talking to me, you, you mean me, right? What is it, why, why you ask me if I'm here for a meeting?
Cause I'm asking if you're here for the meeting.
I know you're doing that, I'm asking why.
Cause I'm being courteous.
Oh, no, you're, you're, geez, you gotta come up with something else, man. The other guy, you gotta... You're not being courteous. We haven't been so far. You haven't been.
I've answered every single one of your questions, however, nothing courteous.
Well, okay, that's not the whole video. I'm not gonna vouch for it. What I do is, um, I'm just saying that, it's my impression. And there's the video. Like, if anyone was gonna watch it, they'd pick their own judgment. You know, I mean, I'm just saying it's my judgment. And I'm not telling anyone else. You know what I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't just say it. I would show the video, and you should remember what I did, so... You know? I was only getting the discussion.
Well, I'm, you said I wasn't being courteous, now I'm asking why you think I wasn't being courteous?
You said you were being courteous, like, a positive thing, and I said not. I didn't say you're being dis... Even though you are. Like, you're, maybe just, you don't have that street experience like this, right? You're, you just driving a car, and you just roll up on them, right? That's what I do with cops, so. You just roll up on them, you can do your weird little thing.
Do you need any kind of medical attention?
Oh, yeah, tell me about that. What is wrong with you?
Do you need any kind of medical attention? Do you need any kind of law enforcement needs? No?
What is wrong with you? What is, what is that question supposed to be about? You know, don't you? She's lying.
We gotta ask you all these questions to make sure that we're covering everything we have to do.
No, you're lying. So what do you think? I need to go lie down somewhere or something?
Let me ask you, what am I lying about?
Don't hurt, oh. I forgot, I actually did forget. I know I said that, but I forgot what I was referring to.
So what are we lying about?
Lying to each other. Oh, lying, that line, I meant, I said her, um, about, uh...
You inferred "we", so what are we lying about?
Hold on, let me just, give me a second. Yeah, the, the thing about, about, um, about it being a fake, you know, kind of setup, you know, pre-planned that the guy was gonna get arrested. The mayor was gonna push it. Um, that's what I think happened. And so, are you listening? You're not listening now, right? I'm answering you. Are you listening now? You? Okay, so I'm not gonna do conversation like...
How was your shift last year?
Hmm?
How was your shift last year? Were you, was it? No?
A lot of traffic.
Oh, yeah, I had to remember calls yesterday. Yeah, I'm a lot.
You may be a bit tired.
Yeah, I didn't say that before.
I'm not, like, loving, I'm well with this guy. Do much.
Yeah.
I don't see this, this guy's not crying, but he's gotta be, be cool. Cries?
Yes.
Yeah, probably. Let them do as much as they want. Low yells at me all the time. He's like, dude, why are they here? Don't take that call.
So what, I can't answer your question now? You're not gonna listen?
I love my mother. My mother's really nice. Especially unless I'm like... Yeah. Can't believe everybody's like getting sick. Oh my gosh. Last couple days, I'm getting a little bit of a crowd.
So you asked me if I need medical attention or something, right? Now you won't discuss it with me.
Do you need medical attention?
Now you're gonna ask again. You, you know, I was answering you.
So yes or no question?
So yes or no question? Do you need medical? So yes or no question? Do you need medical attention?
And why you asking?
Anybody besides us must be in it.
Why are you asking it? Why are you asking it?
Cause we're being courteous.
No, you're fucking, you are, you are not being courteous, it's a lie, man. It's a lie, man. Everyone knows you're lying, you're like a dog, man. Look at you.
Do you like our new body cameras?
Do you have your body cameras on? Are they on?
Uh, they are in continuous...
Oh, they're on right now?
They're buffering.
Oh, but, but, like, it's not recording?
No, I'm not on a call service.
If you wanna turn on, then I'm okay with that. It's actually... Okay, so I'm, I'm needing medical attention, but I can't... Did you turn yours on? Is yours on now? You, dude? Did you turn your body cam on? I heard a beep in the... Oh, so I did hear a beep, right?
Alright, yeah.
See, I don't know what all that means, so, so is it recording now? I don't know what the, all the technicalities.
Hello, how are you?
So do you go out in the car, do the patrol?
I'm sorry, what's up?
Do you patrol? Do you go out in the car and patrol, or, or like?
Yes.
People calling, it's you that shows up?
It's a job of a police officer.
Yeah? Okay. Do you plainclothes?
Nope. It's a job of a detective.
Okay, is there a lot of plainclothes here in Cape Coral?
Decent amount.
Yeah. Cause I gotta, what, what would I do to complain? It's like, it gets difficult with the plainclothes undercover.
There's two ways.
You can't, no, for sure.
There's two, three different ways about the plan. One?
Yeah.
Go on the Cape Coral Police website directly yourself. Two, go to the police station, go into the front desk officer, and he's got like a complaint form that you can fill out.
Yeah.
Or three, would be... Call for an officer, and they're supposed to have to pay for it, for you to fill out the complaint.
So, yeah, it's at J.C. Park. Do you think there's a lot undercover there?
No.
It gets hard to tell, because everyone's being so weird right there.
No, we don't have anybody that stays at J.C. Park.
Or that goes there sometimes.
I mean, every... If there's a call for service, they know that.
No, it's no undercover thing. And the guy's really running stuff. There's a guy with two dogs. And he, um, has all this stuff he does. He drops the leash, the whole thing. And he has him all, he, he holds his arms above, "You guys know, you guys know who that is, come on, man." That guy's so good, man.
Who are you talking about?
The dude I'm talking about. Look at her, she's gonna start smiling and stuff. She can, she's gonna start laughing.
No, I just didn't talk comfortable with you walking behind me with my coat.
No, before I walked. Cause I, you know, you know who I'm talking about. Man, I'm gonna look up, um, I wanna see if he's nailing people for hate crimes or something. I think he's provoking people. You know, hopefully, like, the word leash is in, um, reports. And we clean that up. Yeah, the guy that got hauled out of here, um... I watched him. I was with him last week, he was here. And... He sat in a chair there for, um, a couple hours, an hour and forty minutes. So I got to watch and observe him, please. So, so that guy, you guys handled that guy, don't you? He's like, it's, um... He's like, um... He's been handled, right? I watched him for like an hour and forty minutes.
The, uh, City Hall, like, whiteout. Video recorded on the second floor, has no difference. Okay. So, just a quick question. When you came upstairs, which way did you come?
Why you ask that?
Because if you came up through the front desk... You need a visitor badge. If you came up the elevator, your only business here should be go into council chambers for the city council meeting. So are you here for the council meeting, or do I have to take you back downstairs to get a visitor badge? Are you here for the council meeting? Does this yes or no question? Yes or no? Cause if not, I'm gonna have to have you leave. Or at least go downstairs to get a visitor badge.
So it's to film you guys, I need a visitor badge?
Nope, to be up on the second floor, there's only one reason to be up here without a visitor badge. And that's cause you came up the elevator to go to the council meeting. If you're not here for the council meeting, you have to go back downstairs to get a visitor badge.
So you decide that. I think you need to call a supervisor for that one.
You want me to call supervisor then?
I say you need it, it's your need. Man, you, you're like, you don't have good judgment, you have poor judgment.
I'm asking, do you want me to call supervisor?
Go, you know, do your thing, do what you need to do, man.
Are you requesting that I call supervisor? I don't need a supervisor if you're not requesting it. Okay, are you here for the council meeting, yes or no?
Is your body cam on?
Yes, it is.
Oh, both of you?
Yes.
So, are you here for the council meeting?
Yeah, you need to stop harassing me.
Well, no, you're not up here without a visitor badge, you're not allowed to be.
Or...
Yes, and we're being recorded in here.
Being what?
Everything's being recorded now, so...
Yeah.
Are you here for the council meeting, yes or no? Okay, well then, at this point, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. Cause you're not saying yes or no whether you're here for the council meeting, and you're here for the...
What does it look like I'm here for?
I don't know, you're here for...
You don't know. Well, you got problems, man. You should talk to a supervisor.
Perfect, I'll call one here. Six oh six to unavailable supervisor.
So you do?
Can you please be fifty-one to the cal meeting outside of the chambers, please? I am with six oh...
Seven.
Seven.
That work, can you call me? I'd like to see this.
So you do, you tell you, that guy was really flapping around a lot, right? Right? Like, he really flailed. The guy, he was probably... Yeah, you know, don't you? It shows, you know? If I get arrested, ever up here... I, I'm gonna subpoena you, you're gonna testify... For anything I get arrested for here.
Yeah, five, nine, two thirty-three, go.
Doesn't sound happy. Unless they said no. This, uh... I, they said, uh, it's okay. It'd be okay, just, just, you know. I'm, I'm actually disappointed. I don't like people disappointed. That's why I got into this cop stuff, you know? I mean, try to be a sense of humor. Does this guy have a sense of humor? Cause you don't, do you? She thinks it's funny. Like, but you're, there's something, you, you got a little bit of judgment, your judgment's soft, and you don't have a sense of humor. You gotta defer to people.
So really quick.
You should've, like, talked to her alone or something. Cause you don't, you, you have a problem with judgment. You know? A little bit. And then it goes with not having a sense of humor, but, you gotta, you gotta work on it. And then with your ego. I'm sorry I interrupted, what, what were you gonna say? I forgot to bring my water too, my mouth is really dried out.
You still want a supervisor to come talk with you?
No, as long as you guys, you guys, you guys both in the same frame.
So me, me calling him over the phone and getting everything cleared up is good?
Well...
I just mean, I, honestly, for this, I need a verbal yes or no?
Oh, you're fine, you're fine, I guess.
You don't want a supervisor?
Dude, whatever you wanna do, man, you gotta, just try to get both in the same frame.
Honestly, like, this is in our policy, if you're, are, do you want a...
Oh, like, you know, like, no, I'm not requesting one. Some special things, yeah.
Six oh seven, Sierra twenty-two. You've been in twenty-two.
So how long have you been like a police officer? How long you been a police officer?
Going on four years.
Four years, okay. And it's all in Cape Coral?
What's that?
Cape Coral, just, you just joined?
If it's all our jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. So you're really fit, you can run, right?
What's that?
You get your cardio, right?
I like to think I got...
Yeah, I used to. I'm, I'm broken, man. After my daughter got raped. Started to go down shit. No, in Boston.
No, do you live in Cape?
I'm from, from Boston. Yeah, I do now.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long have you lived in Boston?
Uh, about twenty-five years, or thirty, thirty years, something more. Yeah. Yeah, went through the whole thing.
Okay.
Ended up like, uh, you know, did all the Boston Public School stuff. This one's soon as autism. So really good at the politics. And it's a thing, I just, I just realized Cape Coral doesn't have, um... You don't have a school system. It's like, all the county, and probably, you know, God knows. So this is like... You know, this is not the real thing, you know what I mean, like, um...
So what brought you here from Boston?
Oh, um, it's warmer here.
Huh?
It's warmer here. And I got done with the police in our neighborhood, there's, I mean, I'm in the belly of the beast.
So, I'm not gonna lie, I wouldn't leave Boston if I, if I were you. They have the best seafood up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You should look at my YouTube channel.
What's your YouTube?
Losif Crumb. L.O.S.I.F.
Can I write it down?
Yes, yes, yes. You'll see the trajectory, dude. It's, it's like, it is up, you know, a lot.
What's your YouTube channel?
L.O.S.I.F.
L.O.S.I.F.? You said what?
Yeah, then Crumb. C.R.U.N.B. Like, even if you knew the guy, like, you would've, your testimony would be like, uh... Like, it's not like that, you just know, like, he's gonna do that, and then, like, you know, you're not gonna, you know, you wouldn't be like, in on it, you know what I mean? Like, even if you... Knew it's kinda, oh, gentle, cause you would've just heard or expected that he's... You know, he's gonna try to make a little scene flail, and then, you know, so you wouldn't be... Implicated, you know? Yeah.
Do you have family here in Cape?
Oh, look at my, look at the latest video I did. Just get on, get on your phone. I'll leave you guys alone.
Honestly, we can't use our phones while we're working.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, man, that's good, because these guys are just using their phone.
So do you have, like, family here?
Oh, man, you don't watch my YouTube channel, okay. It's okay, they're good, you guys watch whatever. Hey, I'm gonna go home now, you guys, um...
I just found out about you.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Let me ask you this real quick first.
Yeah, dude, dude. Yeah.
Do you want me to document this in a report or anything?
No, I'm cool, I'm cool. You watch, like, I'm here all the time in the afternoon, you'll see the YouTube channel.
I got, and, hey, I just have to ask because if you wanted a document, I gotta give you the report.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. I've been doing the police and stuff. For a while. And you can see him on my YouTube channel, it's sort of like this. I started doing police, I got really good at it. A lot of the auditors, a lot of people on, on YouTube are fake. Like, they fake, they certainly like auditors that do the police. It's like, other people are filming it and they rig it.
Do you consider yourself as an auditor?
I ended up being one. I wasn't before. So I wanted to just have a sign, and then the police jumped me at Boston City Hall. Like, uh, my sign said, um, I think it was, um... Child raping pigs. Okay, so I had that from Marty Walsh. Sign is faulty there. He was like a block, he lived, he grew up like a... A block and a half away from our house. You know? You know, like, so I'm really in it. Um, I had a sign on my window. Look at, look at my address, twenty-nine Pleasant Street... In Boston. And look at the Google Street View Maps, and you'll see the old sign, Boston City Straped Kids. I had that forever. And finally, um, they did all this stuff to me, and then Pat Rose got arrested. The officer, he was head of the union for a while, when I was trying to record stuff from two thousand sixteen to eighteen.
Our sergeant's here today, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh my god, that's like a real cop. They don't have real cops in the afternoon.
Oh, I promise you, he is a real cop.
Yeah, as I say, you're a real cop, they don't have real cops in the afternoon.
And you know who else is from Boston?
Who?
My sergeant.
Oh, cool, you're from Boston? And you don't have a sense of humor, just like that guy, right?
Oh, alright, I discovered, so.
Yeah, yeah, you don't see, no, no, I, I told him.
You requested one earlier.
Well, I said, he was like acting like he was gonna throw me, you know, throw me out and stuff like that, and so he kicked out. And so I said, he should talk to a supervisor. And it was like, a thing, I could've just... Tried to hang tough and have the ultimatum, but I don't really want him put out. It's like, you know, so I have to like, I actually had to concede a little bit. You know, it makes me a little punk on the video, a little bit, a little bit-ish. At one point, I said, talk to supervisor, I could've just been still stonemalling. Um, and so I ended up like that. Cause it sounded like otherwise he's just gonna immediately...
Okay.
Tell me.
So what I, what I told, what I told Officer Hurst here is, you can record, you're in a public place if you want. So, you're fine.
Do you, you don't come here in the afternoon, right?
Do I?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Depends on if I'm working here. So... That all depends on my shift.
Yeah, they're crazy here. They're like, look what I filmed them, look at them and Officer Bush. He gets Officer Bush going. And I think they're not gonna let her back here now. I know, see, you, she's gonna start, you have to catch her quick, she's gonna start smiling. That, that was too quick, though. And you guys, you have no sense of humor, look at you, man. Do you have a sense of humor? Did you, do you do a lot of overtime or something? I didn't sit last night either. Yeah, okay, there we go.
So, alright, well?
Yeah, I'm going home too.
Okay.
She's, yeah.
Alright, did you need anything else?
No, good.
Okay. Alright, well, have a good day.
Yeah, okay, have a good day. Yeah, yeah, you guys, you guys, it'll be funny, it'll be cool. Hey, I'll see you guys later.
Have a great day.
Officer Bush, oh, there we go. There we go, what is that?
What are you doing for that?
It's, what's your job?
My job?
Yeah.
I'm a contractor in the city.
Like, what kind, what kind of support do you view?
Uh, video.
Yeah? Man, why do you, okay, yeah. You do like the whole, whole with privilege, with extras, what do you get? Video with benefits, right? I knew it, man. That's okay, oh, oh, um, what do you call them, uh? What do you call this special, um, intelligence, um, specialist? Or... Something like that. There you go. Yeah, that's funny. Yeah, definitely, he parks over there too. Oh, man, they didn't tell him. That's a good, that's a good audio. Oh, there's the trees, and this is for cool. There we go. So there we are. It's so funny. It's so funny, man. Oh, there we go, there's one of the cops probably. Oh, yeah, he did leave his car on. That's good. There we go. I parked way in the corner behind the other police car. I think they just leave that one there.